And I said Wednesday, how many you got?
Okay. I'm going to call the meeting to order. It is now 7:00 and this is April 15th, tax day, in case you haven't filed your taxes. For the city of Minutrist are regular council meetings. So first, order of business, just a reminder if you have cell phones, please put them on airplane mode or turn them off so they don't disrupt the proceedings here. And then second, please join me in pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unregapped, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
So welcome everyone here this evening, as well as those watching on YouTube later on. Thank you for joining us. So first I'll make a few introductions. I'm Lisa Whelan, I'm the mayor, and to my left are council members Pam Mortensen, Mike Malator, John Chamberlain, Shannon Bruce, and then on the end we have our city engineer with WSB, Allison Faussky. We have our city clerk then, next to her is Chris Lindquist, and our director of administration, next to Chris is Cassandra Tabor. Also with us sitting in the audience is Public Works Superintendent Gary Peters. And then to my right we have our city administrator, Mike Barone, and then our finance director, Brian Grimm, community development director, David Abel, and then we have Ron Beatty, our city attorney with Kennedy and Graven. And then sitting in for our chief of police this evening is Mike Kokish, Sergeant Mike Kokish. So thank you all for being here. And with that, we're going to move to approval of the agenda. Mr. Barone, I think you have one item you'd like to add.
One slight agenda item addition, please, mayor and council. Under 7A, we're going to add Roman numeral four, staff reports from the director of administration.
Okay.
We all want to talk tonight, so.
Yeah, okay. All right, are there any other additions to the agenda? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve with that one addition?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, motion has been made by Ms. Mortensen and seconded by Ms. Bruce. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. So we'll move on to special presentations. This is with Mr. Grimm, our finance director. It's our 20, our first quarter financial update.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor and council. So yeah, probably not a special presentation, but it's a quarterly presentation that you guys always get to hear me go over. So as far as first quarter activity, I think it's no surprise that I'll probably just highlight the memo and then let council ask any questions. But our revenues at this point of the year are low, we don't receive our taxes to, or I should say low in comparison to where we'll end up at year end, because we don't get our tax settlements to basically June, July, our first half, and then in December for our last half. I did point out that our license and permits actually are doing okay, we're about at 25% of our annual budget, so I think we had, you know, even some things coming in after the first year, suppose people getting permits ready to go once they could get going in the spring, or so we've seen that actually not too bad. I think I referenced in there that our overall collections are at 7% of budget. Last year it was at about 5%, so you can see it's just the way that the ebb and flow of the year is. The other thing I noticed is that our investment income, that has to do with, you know, as well as actual investment income, and some market value adjustments, and as the market, you know, sort of fluctuates, or not even fluctuates, but it ebbs and flows, I guess, to use that term again. You'll see that right now we're at 65% of the annual budget, but I think that'll smooth out over time as the, basically the markets sort of, basically, you know, go through their valleys and peaks and valleys throughout the year. On the expenditure side, we're tracking pretty much where we should be. Our overall general fund expenditures are about 25% year-to-date comparison to the budgeted expenditures, which is, it's pretty standard again, when you, last year for comparison, it was about at 24%, so about, you know, percent higher than we were in 2018. I think I referenced there that, you know, we have some things we've paid for the full year, like our property insurance and stuff, some things we need to be billed for yet. And then the biggest item probably over the first quarter, and I guess we probably saw another example of that last Wednesday, Thursday, was our snow ice budget, as well as some of our overtime because of all the snow and ice storms or events, is, you know, pretty much higher than what you'd project in probably more normal winter. The last couple of years, we've probably had more winters than I recall when I was younger, or I don't know. I guess everyone thinks that when they were younger, it was worse weather, I guess, or something, so. But otherwise, and then lastly, I touched on the cash report and listed, I think there's a couple of those funds that have more of those temporary timing differences as far as when we make our, you know, principal and interest payments in comparison to when we get our revenues in here at mid-year and end of year, so. And then the last thing I wanted to note is we'll actually have our audit presented for 2018 in about a month here at our second meeting in May, so you'll see those final numbers with a presentation from our auditors, Cliff and Larson Allen, there. And I brought that quarterly update, I think, a couple months ago, as far as where we're sitting a month or two ago, as far as year end, our fourth quarter for 2018. So I don't know if anyone has any questions based on the reports that are, I guess, attached, pages five through 11, I think they were whatever, the packet. Otherwise, I think it's, in April, we're sitting about where we are next year, so.
All right. Any questions? Okay, thank you. Nice, nice report, Mr. Grimm, thank you. So next on the agenda, we have persons to be heard, we have nobody signed up, so we'll move on to our consent agenda items. They consist of approve our amended city council regular meeting minutes from March 18th, 2019, approve the city council regular meeting minutes from April 1st, 2019, C is approve the claims, and D is adopt an updated post-insurance debt compliance policy for tax-exempt and tax-advantaged government bonds. I'd like to remove 4D from the consent. Are there any others? Otherwise, it consists of A, B, and C. Is there a motion to approve A, B, and C?
Excuse me, I wanted to remove D as well, so I have some things to speak on when we take that off.
Okay. So with that, remains A, B, and C?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded to approve consent agenda items A, B, and C. Any further discuss, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. So I have just a quick question of, Brian, you've read this policy, I'm assuming, and you understand it thoroughly, it's somewhat complicated, it sounds a little bit difficult.
And I think it's noted in the resolution, so we adopted this back in 2012, as far as just formalizing some what we have to do after bonds are issued, you have to do continuing disclosure requirements, you know, supplier audits to, I mean, it's called some acronym as far as, you know, municipal market and stuff, and you got to do arbitrage calculations, which is making sure that our, basically, in short, you know, our interest we earn on our money sitting in our debt service fund isn't really making more than what we're paying on the bonds, it's because they're issued at tax exempt, so the IRS wants to make sure you're sort of not making money on issuing tax-exempt bonds, so.
Okay.
So what this does is, you know, it's been seven years since we updated, there's been some things that have changed in both the continuing disclosure and as far as even just the arbitrage monitoring, so this is basically an updated policy that takes into account those changes.
Okay. And then, thank you, that's good clarification. And then, I'm assuming, Mr. Beatty, you had an opportunity to review this?
Oh, Madam Mayor and council, in detail.
[laughing]
It is a complicated document. Brian, I think gave a very good explanation. It's something that cities do with some regularity, and it has been a while since you've adopted one, so I think it's appropriate that you adopt the updated policy.
Okay. I just want to make sure, since, Mr. Grimm, you are going to be the one that has to implement this policy, that you're fully cognizant of and fully aware of all of the implications here, so.
Yeah, and any questions that I come across as I'm going through, and I coordinate with our financial advisor, Ellers, to make sure we, you know, are looking at the debt funds periodically, and sometimes there's costs that come across for every, like, they have different reporting requirements at like three and five years as far as monitoring the, these bonds, and the bonds that we have outstanding as far as that we're staying in compliance with arbitrage and those items that are, we have to follow up, post issuance, I guess, type items, so.
All right, all right, that's all the questions I had.
And my comment was, this is a policy update, but council hasn't been given what the changes are, and I would, it would be nice to have a red line copy if we're updating something to see what the changes are, or the original version and the updated version, and we weren't provided that, and I'm wondering why.
I think the main, from speaking with our financial advisor, the main changes were in Section 7, it's partially probably, I just don't, yeah, work in ordinances and policies as much as some of it.
But anytime you ask council to approve something, we're changing and updating a policy, but we don't know what the changes are, and I'm uncomfortable voting for something that I haven't been told what the changes are.
I think the more important thing is, does it comply with current procedures and current requirements? And that's why I was asking Mr. Beatty, does, have you read it thoroughly, do you understand it, or does this policy comply with current regulations? That's, I think, the most important part.
But as a council member, voting to approve something, I would like to know what I'm approving.
And that was in your packet?
Yes, I read it, and as you stated, it's complicated, and it's a lot of legalese, and.
Sure.
But we haven't been shown what the changes are, and that's my point.
Okay.
I can, yeah, provide that.
I'd like to see the changes before I wrote on it, I would be more comfortable seeing a red line version of what the changes are.
Okay, anybody else have an issue with approving this policy tonight?
I will say, I think Ms. Bruce has a valid point, that from when we do changes, it would be nice to see a red line version, I mean, that's pretty common in the legal practice, obviously. I'm comfortable with what's here, but I would, I would like to see going forward if it's, if we're doing a change, I think that's a reasonable request, actually, see what the change is. It'd actually make my review of it much quicker, because then I just have to look at what the changes are, not try to understand.
Exactly. But I think if we're a council and we're approving a policy, regardless of whether it's changed or not, we should know the entire, we should read the entire document.
Oh, absolutely, that's what a red line version does, is it allows you to see the whole policy, as well as the changes. I mean, I'm comfortable with what we have here, but I think going forward it'd be a good practice to, when we're doing a policy change, to see a red line version.
Sure.
And I think one of the reasons councilman Malator is comfortable, he feels in the financial world, and I don't, so that's why it's more important for me to see those changes than someone that's familiar with the terminology in the document.
Okay.
I would agree with the bull saying, I was familiar with terminology, or at least it came back to me, and it made sense what I was reading, although it took me a while to read it. So I'm comfortable with voting for it again, but yes, it would have sped up my review if I had seen the change issues.
I looked at it as a new document, basically, you know, so that's how I reviewed it and looked at it, and again, like I said, my major concern was whether or not our attorney and Brian had reviewed it thoroughly, and if they're recommending it, and they're saying that it does meet all of the requirements. That's, I think, the biggest issue that we need to be concerned about, so.
And I believe the council's job is oversight over staff and the attorney, and that's our job, so.
So, thank you. So with that, then I will make a motion to adopt the updated post-insurance debt compliance policy with the tax-exempt and tax-advantaged governmental bonds. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Motion passes for one, Bruce dissenting. Next we move on to public hearings, which there are none, so now we move on to our business items. And this is to approve the scope of services for the SEH for the water tower site, Mr. Barone, and we have Miles Jensen with us this evening as well.
Yeah, I'll just introduce Miles, once again, with SEH, and he's going to go over the information regarding the soil borings, and I know Mr. Beatty's going to chime in on a few things, and so we'll just go from there. Miles?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council, staff. So I assure you I'll be shorter than I have been in the past. This is a quick little presentation, you know, just edited from the past one, and this is specific to the 9400 site on Highway 7, so I'm just going to click through this. So water storage needs, I think we've covered that in the past, we're looking at a 500,000 gallon tank, the alternate sites, where there were some sites that you'll see on the map, that'll maybe be a bit of a reminder, and then we have this new proposed site, we're talking about the elevated tank option and some costs, so. You probably remember this chart that shows it's a, that storage, the way we calculated it in two different manners, we're, city's right at a point now where it's time to add some storage onto the system. These were the proposed sites that we looked at before, the five sites, and then there's the, there's the new one here, and I don't even know what this is. Anyways, you know where it is, in fact, it's just, it's just, thank you, it's just to the east of, I believe, Site Number 1, and zooming in a little bit, I think that, so there's, there's the site, and I think Site Number 1 was just there, yep, it was just off the city's property to the, to the west. Some good use of Google Maps or whatever. And then you may remember this, and part of the cost of the water tower is just constructing the shaft so we can get the water level at the proper hydraulic drain line. It's interesting, in our discussion from before, if you recall, that Site Number 1 was pretty attractive just because the height of the shaft could be significantly shorter. Well, this one isn't particularly bad, it's actually kind of normal, 156 feet to overflow, and that's a pretty typical height water tower. I think the beauty of it is, it's a little bit closer to your existing trunk water main, and so what you're seeing there is, the net result is a little shorter tank than some of them, and a little shorter length of water main, and it turns out to be a little bit less than the other ones that we looked at before. And then here, Chad put this together and talks about some of the advantages and disadvantages, and didn't really note any disadvantages, he did note the advantage, you know, it's remote visual location, which I would tend to agree with, and a reasonable tower height, so nothing particularly surprising, it's just, it seems to fill in all of the boxes that we had there, fire flow, functional hydraulics, service area, land availability, and it doesn't matter where the tank would go on the west end of town, you'll still need a altitude valve at King's Point, so it doesn't overflow. And that's, that's that little presentation piece. Any questions on that? Kind of zipped through it fast like I promised.
I think we're good?
And so, I think we're at a point now with the purchase agreement where the next piece is to, or at least from our perspective, is to do a quick evaluation of the site with some soil borings, we've talked about this in the past, we want to make sure that the soil is suitable, so that we understand what kind of foundation, you know, we would like to have. We're hoping for a standard, you know, concrete, big giant mass, as opposed to any piles or anything like that, and then we just like to know where groundwater's at, so. Put together, from, between, our geotecs and Brawn Engineering have put together a proposal for two options, I think that's the way you broke it up?
Yep. So we have the two options, the first one is not only the work from SEH, but the minimum services as described on the Brawn quote, and then the second option is the same to SEH and the minimum service of Brawn, plus the additional PISO services from Brawn. So I don't know if you want to talk a little bit about the two options?
So, option number one was the lower?
Yep.
Okay, so option, in either option, our geotech staff has some work to do to put together the final report package, and then from Brawn, to do the 80-foot boring and some of the testing that our folks would like them to do at a minimum for soil strength, so the total of that is just under $6,500, $64.96. And then option two puts in a PISO tube so we can monitor groundwater, not only right when they drill the hole, but we can, we can monitor it over the course of the next few weeks or month to understand what kind of rebound there's going to be, and really where the groundwater level is at, and that becomes of interest if you look at a ground storage tank.
I guess, when I read through all of this, I understood that the option two was higher because it included looking at a ground storage tank instead of a water tower?
Yeah, it looks at the, at where the groundwater table is specifically, yeah.
For the purpose of a ground storage?
Correct, correct. So if you don't do a ground storage.
Ground storage, we would need to do that.
Would need to do.
Okay.
And we could always do that portion of the test at later time, too, right?
You can, the only thing with that is their rig is going to be out there, because they'll have done the hole, and then they're going to shove the tube in, so then what they would charge for is to come back out, and you know, they need to abandon the hole, well, so then what they'll have to do is drill another hole, and then put the tube in there, so.
Yeah, state requirements say if you drill a hole that deep, you can't just leave it open, you have to plug it back up, so.
That makes sense.
So if they come back, they're going to have to drill another hole.
25 feet, right, Allison, 25 feet? 24.9, you don't have to abandon it, 25 you do. So at 80 feet?
You have to, yeah, you have to.
Is that your estimation of where the ground level, groundwater level is?
I don't really want to guess, but I mean, I'm looking at where the hill is, and I'm thinking, it's got to be down there, always. I feel way more comfortable with this than, you know, the other park site that we're looking at, so, yeah. If it's high, I'll be befuddled.
So now, could you do a ground storage that wasn't buried, but was on grade, if you will, so to speak?
Yeah, yeah.
Because I know we talked about that, too.
Do you remember the pictures that I had?
Right.
I had some where it was completely buried?
Right.
Like the tank in Plymouth, Vicksburg Lane tank? And then I had some that were partially buried, and then I had some that were sitting on grade.
Right.
So, and really what, you know, tends to drive that is just where the groundwater is, because the Department of Health has a rule that the normal groundwater level has to be two feet below the inside bottom of the tank.
So would you have to do, if you did an at-grade storage, or ground storage, not below, but at, on, would you have to still do the pismeters reading?
No, and probably not really, I mean, our geotecs would love that, so, but I'm thinking that in that case, what we would likely do is just look at the boring and see where it was wet, you know?
Right.
And say, well, that's where the boring is, I think that's pretty typical for a lot of structures that.
Okay.
Are built, but.
And considering whether we're going to do a tower or a ground storage, I've heard that when it comes to, that having a water tower is better, because if there's a power outage, you have water pressure without your pumps, and so you can provide water pressure even when there's no power, and they're also more efficient for fire suppression, because if you have, like, two fires going at the same time, sometimes the pumps in a ground storage tank can't keep up with the demand, and for those reasons alone, I would tend towards thinking a water tower makes more sense.
Yeah, so this is just me personally talking, but I agree with you that, that once you have it in the, in the tank, in the bowl, you know, all you're waiting for is gravity to pull it out, and so there's, there's some reassurance there that you're not worried about, you know, mechanical devices and things like that. Now, of course, through the design, or even through this analysis here, we've been considering, you know, standby power and all those sorts of things that would equate to what you have in that tank and stuff, but it's, this is just me again, you know, I like to have it to sit up in the air.
Well, there may be also some benefits in a tower, simply because we have two other towers, so we know how they function.
Right.
You kind of have that redundancy or expertise in that area already in our public works, so that might help. I just don't want to totally take it off the table, and if we, if we don't have to do the pismeter, the extra, and we could still do a at-ground storage and still get the same, then maybe we don't need it, and we don't need to spend the extra money, but...
Right, I would agree with you.
I think we were looking at the in-ground storage simply from a visual standpoint, and that may not be the issue as much here in this location.
And that's a safe bet, but, right.
Okay, all right, so, any other questions? Otherwise, it's exciting to be moving forward, finally, after years of discussion.
Did you want to?
And Ron, any comments, or?
Madam Mayor, council, the only thing I was going to point out is, what we're really doing, big picture, is dealing with the contingencies in the purchase agreement that we talked about before. This is sort of the most important, one of the most visible one. Obviously, we don't want to buy a site that won't work for the facilities that we want to put on it, and so what you're being asked to do tonight is to authorize the work to ensure that, but there are going to be some other things that are going on, sort of in the background, to deal with the other contingencies. One is title. Assuming you approve this tonight, I'm going to order title evidence tomorrow morning. Typically, that's something that the seller does, but as you know, the city has agreed to pick up those costs, so I'll be ordering that and reviewing it and taking care of any issues. As we talked last time, the planning commission at the end of the month will be dealing with satisfying one of the statutory requirements for comp plan, making sure that this is consistent with the comp plan. The other thing is, we need to get a survey and legal description of the property, because as you recall, in fact, just showed it on the slide, the purchase agreement simply has a colored portion of the property that indicates in general where, what, where the two acres are that we want to buy. That's not a separate lot yet, and so before we close, and closing is scheduled for no later than June 15th, we need to get a survey of that property.
Right.
And do a lot division so that there is a parcel that we can purchase, and so one of the other things that I'd ask you to consider authorizing SEH to do tonight is that survey and produce that legal description, so we can process it and bring that back to you sometime before the closing.
So, but we don't know what the cost of that is, or do we?
Yeah, we do it, it's actually $1,500.
Oh, to do the survey and?
Yep, to create the legal description.
Okay.
And do the survey, produce the survey, put the pins in the corner.
Yeah.
And get it to a point where we can bring a lot split to you as a council to go ahead and produce that lot split, because that's something, of course, we're going to have to do before closing, so that we have something to actually buy, so.
And then the legal, who does the legal description?
SEH does.
SEH, okay, all right, and that's 1,500.
Yep.
So we're looking at authorizing possibly 6,496 for the, for the borings, and then another 15 for the lot description and survey, so, okay, good, good to know.
I have a question. Have we contracted with SEH to provide design documents for a water tower?
Yeah, we've worked, when we first brought SEH on board, it was for three items. One was the design and implementation of the two water treatment plants, the second one was the water main connection between the central and south area, or central and south, and the third was to do the water tower, yeah.
So we have a contract with them?
Yep.
That this council?
Well, not these five people, but the city administrative council approved.
And when was that?
2015. 15, when they came on board.
We went out for bids, and we... We went out for bids, and we, we, we got like, what, five or six-
Four, five, six.
Proposals, and, and we went with the-
Yeah.
I, I was just reading on page forty-seven that, that they're contracted with us to provide doc, design documents for a water tower.
Right.
And I-
That was part of the original, we did not anticipate that it was going to take as long as it has to find the location for the water tower. I would have loved to have done with it by now, but we're not, so here we are tonight.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
I just want to be sure we're all in agreement, or mostly in agreement, that if we don't do option two, and then somewhere down the line, and I think if I recall from last year when I was here, that the ground tank overall becomes the cheapest option. Maintenance, painting, some of those things. I know there's pumps, extra pumps, et cetera. But if we don't do number two, and then we decide we really want to do a tank, and we want to put it down, not up, uh, at surface, that we may end up having additional cost. Is that stated somewhere correctly?
Yeah, yeah, your, your point is, is right on, you know, and it was, it was back to the earlier question of, you know, okay, wha- what if we want to look at the, the groundwater and see where it's really at?
Right.
And you got to come back out and drill a hole again and put the thing in there and abandon it later on, so there's, that, that, there's that remob cost.
That's why I was asking if you can do an at-grade ground storage without additional borings.
Yeah, I'm pretty comfortable with that, because we, we'll, we'll know the, the soil bearing pressure and, and all that. So, then it would be, you're only digging down as deep as the foundations.
So, let me ask you something. Is, is it less expensive to do an at-grade ground storage versus an underground?
I'm going to say, perhaps.
Okay.
Yeah. There's probably less, well, there is, there's less structural concerns, of course, because you're not holding back-
Right.
The, the dirt anymore. There's less excavation that you would have to do, because you don't have to drill, dig this massive hole to stick this chunk of con, you know, a tank into-
Right.
And then get rid of the dirt.
Right.
If you can't, you know, spread it out on the site somewhere, decorative mounds or whatever you have. So, I, I would agree that, you know, completely burying it is probably more money than sticking it on the surface.
And I think at this site, we wouldn't have to completely bury it.
No, no, I would, I would offer that depending what you would do with the architectural features, the aesthetic features, you know, on the outside, that will start to take away from, you know, your savings of putting it on grade and-
Right.
And, and, and I don't have a good feel for that, standing here today, what that would be. Just something to be aware of.
Yeah.
It has to be beautiful, it sits up, right?
Well, not necessarily. Plant a few trees around it.
So, just kind of go with me, okay. It has to look a little more attractive if it's up versus you don't care what it looks like if it's buried.
Right.
I think what you have to think about is the probability that we would do an underground, and is, if the probability is low, I'm willing to take the risk of not doing that second option.
Because I think, as, I think as Miles mentioned, as they stick the tube in the ground, they're probably going to be able to, maybe not as accuracy, accurately as they would be with a PISO, but I think they'll have a rough idea of where the water table is, so, again, if we, uh, come back in the, whatever possibly could change, it could be, uh, neighborhood unrest about it, I don't know. Who knows what will happen, but the whole point is if we have to do it, I think we come back and, yeah, we're out a few thousand more bucks, but I, I got chided for saying-
But we also have the ground.
But when we're talking two something million dollars, I'm not too worried about a couple thousand. I like to watch our pennies, but I think we're fine now with this, so.
Okay, so I think, is, are we comfortable then going with the sixty-four ninety-six with option, I think that's option one?
Correct.
And not doing the pizometer services at this time, and then also authorizing fifteen hundred dollars for a, a survey and a title description? Okay?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. So, is there a motion to that?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, a motion has been made and seconded to, um, approve the sixty-four ninety-six and the fifteen hundred for SEH to perform the, uh, bo, soil borings and the, um, survey and, um, property description work. So, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with a "aye." Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Miles.
All right. So, we're starting on this tomorrow, right, Ron?
Digging. Yes, we're digging tomorrow.
Um, Miles, I just have one other quick question, if you don't mind. Um, so, we've been talking about holding an open house for the public to come in and kind of letting them know what's going on. Uh, so can you give us some estimation as to when these, because I think the soil borings are going to be the deciding factor? And we don't want to be, jump the gun, so to speak, but is there some kind of timeframe as to approximately? I don't want to date tonight, but are these soil borings going to be done by the end of May? I mean, appro, uh, June, what, what's the timing on this, do you know?
I would like to think that, you know, we could have this wrapped up toward the end of May.
Okay.
Now, as I say that, I, I, just a little bit earlier, I was looking through Bronn's proposal, and the first downer that I read was they can mobilize within three weeks of notification. So, right off the bat, we're already three weeks. I was like, what? And then, and then from that, there's, you know, it's-
A couple months.
One day of borings, which, you know, of course. But then, then it was, it was something like two weeks. It's in that Bronn thing.
Yeah, yeah.
Two weeks of, of testing, and then after that, another two to three weeks of reporting, so, wow, so.
So, we're going to have to squeeze-
So, we're looking July?
Yeah, so I, I'm going to have to kind of, you know, see if we can't hustle them up a little.
We have to, because closing is July, June.
Yeah, Madam Mayor and Council, I mean, I read all of that, too, and I got a little bit concerned, because if you add all that up, it's about, uh, we only have about eight and a half weeks between tomorrow morning and really June fourteenth, which is this, the Friday, and that all adds up to between seven and nine weeks, depending on whether it's two or three, and so there isn't much time in there. And obviously, that needs to be done before we decide to pull the trigger and buy something, because we don't want to buy something we can't use.
Right. So, you're going to have to put some pressure on Bronn.
Yeah, I assure you that I will.
This has to get done.
Yeah. As I was reading that, and then as soon as you said June fifteenth, I was like, oh.
Okay, so.
So, yeah, anyways, we'll-
All right.
I'll report back to you folks as soon as I understand.
All right, thank you. So, we're probably looking sometime after that for an open house. So, we'll, I didn't want an exact date, I just kind of wanted on our radar screens that we're going to do that, so, all right. Okay, so then, um, next, uh, that concludes our business items for this evening, so we'll move on to administrative items, uh, staff reports.
Uh, yes.
City Administrator.
I'm up first. Uh, I'm Mayor and Council. Um, did receive an email this afternoon from Tiffany Schoffler, who's a project and land manager at Minnehaw Creek Water Set District, and they're advising us that we, their expectations are that we're getting one to one and a half inches of rain on Wednesday and Thursday. And if we get what's expected, then Lake Minnetaka water level will rise over the nine-hundred-thirty-foot elevation, and MCWD will, will no longer be able to control the discharge as the upper watershed streams discharge into the lake. So, last time this occurred was twenty-fourteen, we all remember that. Uh, and they will provide us with an update based on what actually does come down from the skies, um, rain-wise. So, just know there might be some localized flooding, maybe not essentially here, but there could be some. But further downstream, as part of their district, I mean, they go all the way towards, um, Minnehaw Falls, I believe. So, it's, it's a long run of, uh, cities that are, long list of cities that are on this, uh, distribution, but I just thought I'd give you that quick update about that. Um, as I mentioned just a little bit earlier, I believe in a work session that we were meeting with Superintendent Borg on Wednesday to discuss the Sunnyfield Road and maybe a couple other things, um, projects, so that's Wednesday at ten AM. And then a short reminder that, uh, our next meeting is May sixth, which is three weeks from tonight, not two. So, that happens a few times each year, and this is one of them.
All right. And then, um, David, do you need somebody for, um, planning?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mike.
All right, so we've got that.
That's twenty seconds.
Twenty seconds to down, correct.
All right. And City Clerk?
Madam Ma, hi, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Just wanted to give you a quick reminder that the open book meeting is also next week. Um, on Wednesday, the twenty-fourth, the county assessor will be here in the council chambers between four and seven PM to meet with residents that have questions regarding their two thousand nineteen property tax, which would affect their twenty-twenty.
Their valuation for nineteen.
Yeah, for twenty.
Do we have that posted on our website?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so that's on the website, so.
It's on the website. It's been, I believe, in the council corner, and it's also posted. And it's been put in the newspaper also, so.
That's Kevin.
That's Kevin, mm-hmm.
And they don't need to make appointments, though, right?
They don't, but it's encouraged that they do, to, um, contact the assessor's office.
Do we send out an email? Do we do an email blast for that?
Not that specifically. We don't necessarily have a, a line item that people sign up for, just because that would be one announcement for the year. But we do send it out in, in every other format.
Okay.
And I believe on people's evaluation notice, again, it says if you have-
It says that, too.
So, it's an individual mailing to them, I guess.
Yeah, okay, all right.
And then the other thing I wanted to mention was, um, I know it's a little early, but in two thousand twenty, we're going to have a presidential nomination primary, and that is something new. Well, I guess I shouldn't say new. It was tried once in nineteen ninety-two. Um, but it sounds like it, we're, we will be having that, and it will be on March third of two thousand twenty. Um, it will be ran similar to the primary and the general elections with the forty-six-day in-person absentee. Um, people will be able to go to their polling locations to vote on the third. Um, there will be four major political parties, um, with, each with a separate ballot. So, those parties will be the Democratic, Republican, grassroots legalized cannabis party, and then the legal marijuana now party. Um, so, this is, the reason why I'm bringing this is, uh, I know it's a little early for budgeting, but we will have to budget for another election cycle. Um, so we will be incurring additional, um-
Expenses.
Expenses with training, because there's additional training for this primary. Um, and then also the election itself. In two thousand eighteen, the city spent for the primary and for the general, it was thirteen thousand six hundred and twenty dollars. So, we're kind of estimating about seven thousand dollars this may cost the city. Supposedly, we're, we're going to get reimbursed for that, but that's not a guarantee, so. And then also the individual caucuses will be held the week before, on February twenty-fifth. So, and then the, a voter must state which party's ballot they want when they're requesting a ballot. And that ballot will contain only that party's candidates. And then the voters, the, this is the other key factor, is the voter's choice of party ballot will be recorded and will be public information. Um, but how a voter voted on the ballot will still be kept secret, so. So, in other words, when you go into the polling location, you have to tell the election judge which ballot you want.
Okay.
Just wanted to give you guys an update on that.
Yeah, all right. So, next we have Public Works Superintendent, Mr. Peters.
I'm Madam Mayor and Council. Uh, Mr. Brony wanted to get, have me give you guys an update on, kind of, we were kind of talking about how the roads have just kind of exploded over this last spring. As you can see, they've really deteriorated even worse than what they have. Um, as of count right now, we have forty-seven frost boils that we need to address on our gravel roads. Um, one is on a paved road, um, down from a hundred and sixty-plus that we had in two thousand sixteen, though, so that's a good thing. But, um, it's still, um, we're gonna, I'm, the roads have really gone, and Allison and I, I talked this, it's been a really, really bad season for it this year, for, it's the worst I've seen it, so. Um, I don't know if any of you have any, we've, I've gotten some complaints. Uh, we did lower our weight restrictions from seven-ton maximums on the roads, down to five-ton this year, um, just to save what infrastructure we have left. A lot of the roads that were listed at seven-ton, um, are starting to deteriorate, so we wanted to kind of save what we got, so, um, as a road authority, I can lower it down. And, um, before Allison got here, I talked to Paul Hornby about it, and we decided to lower most everything down to five-ton maximum on the roads, just to try to start saving it. Um, I know a lot of the builders aren't real overly happy with it, but it's our infrastructure, we need to save what we've got left, so. Um, so, if you see the new signs around, we repost everything to that. Um, and lastly, I just wanted to bring up, I know Mike had mentioned, uh, the grader earlier before. Um, part of our CIP this year was to update, um, to either replace the grader, it was due for replacement, um, but we decided to contact RDO, um, who was the John Deere supplier of that machine, to request a quote to see how much it'd be to refurb it. Um, we had budgeted a hundred and thirty thousand dollars for the refurb, and it's a complete redo of the transmission, the motor, the, um, hydraulic system, the rear tandems, as well as the cooling system. Uh, we were having a really bad overheat problem, plus they went through and checked all the electronics, uh, cleaned everything up real nice. Uh, the only thing we did not do is the painting. Uh, paint was pretty good on it yet. Um, we got our final bill in, and, uh, we were very happy to see that we had saved some money through not having to redo any of the planetary gears in the dual tandem drives in the rear, saved a big chunk of change. Uh, we, uh, came in at under a hundred and five thousand dollars for that, so, about twenty-five thousand less than budget, which is great. Working with RDO has been really good, and, you know, just as compared to doing it, we were looking at three hundred thousand. So, um, the loader I know is coming up, that'll be the next one, and we'll probably talk to them about doing the same thing. I mean, our equipment is, you know, it, it doesn't get abused here like, you know, it does in other, used as much as it doesn't, like a regular commercial site, so, I mean, it's worth saving and doing this. Uh, we do get a, a warranty on this, and, uh, if the weather would cooperate, we would love to get out and start doing stuff, but with the snow again now, we're just that much farther behind, so it's going to be a, another one of these seasons where we're just going to have a late start, and, um, we're, I've had a lot of phone calls on road conditions already, and, um, you know, I, I'm not shy and tell people what's going on and stuff like that, so it's, it's just a matter of time. I mean, that's the biggest thing. Um, unfortunately, we just can't go, like with a blacktop, we can't go to the gravel roads and just throw gravel in a hole, you know, on a gravel road. It'll just work its way out, you know, they need to be, um, done properly. We just can't do anything with them, and, but we will start trying next week to do some of the smaller, um, frost boils and try to get going on it, so. We're, we, we will be out there, so I just don't want that rain.
Okay, yeah, really. I think a lot of people don't want that much rain. All right. Um, and then, um, another staff report, the Director of Administration, Ms. Kabor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I just wanted to provide a quick update on our current hiring. So, last week, we held a variety of panel interviews for our public works position, and unfortunately, we weren't able to find the right candidate, so that's been reposted, and we will be holding interviews in about two to three weeks, just depending on what comes in and if we're needing to extend that. Our building inspector position has been posted, um, that closed, and we're holding interviews for that this week. Right now, it looks like we'll have three interviews on the books. We had two candidates who applied and then withdrew from the process, so hopefully we'll find our candidate, and if not, we'll wait for the right candidate and post again, so. Just to keep you in the loop.
Okay, thank you. Any other staff reports? Otherwise, we'll move on to the council reports. Um, we'll start at the end. Ms. Bruce?
I don't have a minute.
Okay. Mr. Chumpin?
Pioneer Sarah Creek on Thursday, the eighteenth, I will be dealing with preliminary budget.
Okay.
Um, LMCD, uh, unfortunately, I had a conflict last week. I was not able to attend, uh, last week's meeting. Um, the legislation that I discussed last week, or last time we met, uh, is still being, uh, debated. Uh, I don't have the exact status of where each bill is at. Um, I think also all of us saw the letter from Orno again. Um, as I read that, it's, you can obviously read, read that and jump to your conclusions. Uh, I don't think there's anything new in that, but, um, there was, I think that was a response to the position that LMCD took on that item, so, um, that's what I'll handle then.
I have a question about that, and maybe Mr. Beatty can speak to it, is the letter from Orno said that the city had jurisdiction over anything above the highway- over anything above the high watermark. And it seems like the city should have jurisdiction over things over the high watermark. And there seems to be a debate or some conflict about that legal issue. And what is your take on it?
Madam Mayor and Council, I didn't see the subsequent letter, if there was one. I'm not an expert on that. I know the cities and the LMCD share jurisdiction about the docks, but I don't know where the dividing line is with regard to the above high watermark.
Thanks.
Okay, all right, Ms. Martinson?
I attended the Personnel Committee on the 10th. WCC meeting was canceled on the 11th due to the weather, and that's it.
Okay, so, yeah, a lot of things were canceled due to the weather. So the weekend breakfast was actually moved to May 30th, so I didn't attend this past week. The Gillespie meeting was also moved actually till the 18th, so I'll be going to that. Attended the Personnel Committee meeting. And then the Northwest League did not cancel, but due to the weather, I did not go because the roads were so bad. So, coming up, well, that's all I'm going to report on for now. So with that, that concludes all of our business items and our reports. Yeah, we do have an administrative performance review. This will be a closed session, so pursuant to Minnesota Statute 13D.05, we will close the, or, yeah, close the open meeting at this point. So, thank you all for coming. Do I have a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion has made and seconded. A motion was made by Ms. Bruce and seconded by Mr. Chumpeland to go into closed session. All right, so we are back in open session. When it comes to personnel issues, a lot of times we have closed sessions. Sometimes they're required, sometimes they're asked for. So we did have a performance review by, of our City Administrator, Mike Broney. He received a very, very good performance review. And the council agreed and passed unanimously that he would get a raise 4%. That included the 2.75 COLA and then a 1.25% adjustment to performance adjustment, market adjustment, so for a total of 4%. So with that, that's all we need. And we are then done with our meeting for this evening. So all I need is a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, all those in favor signify with aye. Aye. All those opposed, motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much.